December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, five thirty P M, Select Boards Meeting. This meeting is recorded.
Good evening, folks. We'll start with, uh, does anybody we got to pray for today, Russ?
Okay, got it.
By the way, okay. I usually screw up and miss it, so I was just, good. Yeah, I'm ahead of schedule. All right, we're gonna do a open session. Anyone have public comments? Anybody? You in the back, sir? No? All right, well, maybe next week. Thank you. Right, well, first up, we'll go to our payroll warrant. One nine one four dated twelve ten eighteen in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. And then we have a payables warrant, one nine one five B, dated twelve seventeen eighteen in the amount of, let's see where is, one million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Yeah, that's returning, um, short-term borrowings.
Okay. Fire truck in there? All right. And we have minutes for the, uh, Budget Roundtable Minutes for eleven twenty-nine eighteen at the school.
Yep.
Need a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then regular session minutes for twelve four eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. All right. Up first here, I have, uh, is this matching? L M C Job Description? I don't have that.
There's a few of them. This is because the Secretary, Sue Hepern is retired.
Yep, understood.
So Dick and Cindy and myself worked with Fred to update it.
Yeah.
And that's what Fred is okay.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. So we need to approve as written?
Yep. Unless you saw anything.
You didn't see anything in there, Russ, uh?
No.
Nothing?
Fred is.
Nothing concerning dogs or anything? It's all clean?
It's all clean.
You got this one, that's fair.
Dogs are not permitted.
No dog, yeah. No dogs permitted.
Not even service dogs.
Not even service dogs. Wonderful.
Near Russell.
Need a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any hearings coming up on that?
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't have anything more for animals in front of me yet, but.
I know, you're getting a tape.
Yeah, the tape is ordered. I don't know what's taking so long. All right, we just get caught up here. L M C, okay. Approve E M T conversion from E M T firefighter for call force. Uh, Anagati and Perol?
Yep, Perol.
Perol?
Yeah, and you have updated.
That's what, I know. There's two different things happening, right?
Yep, that's in your folders.
Yeah.
That's different than the people coming in at your meeting later.
Okay.
Which would be one A. This is four A.
Okay, right.
They're doing four A.
So I'm doing four A now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Basically, you just have two people that are just.
Yep, they're moving up in our assignment world.
Yep, they're getting more in-depth training and certifications and taking on more responsibilities as firefighters.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's hope they move sooner than later.
Yes.
All right.
Want to sign that, Joe?
Yeah, so we.
Oh, sure. I'm so sorry. Got all confused there. So now we'll go to five. Okay. We gotta date it and everything. Eighteen eighteen. All right, then we have a P V P C invoice number twenty-four in the amount of eighteen hundred and nine dollars and seven cents. And this is to tidy up the last piece of this, I think?
No, there's still some more, because you know, the, um.
Some more out there?
Well, yeah, because think about it. We're dealing with Erica on the.
Oh, the other issues.
The van acquisition.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
As well as the food pantry.
Understood.
Sign off you just did.
Okay.
That the board authorized at the last meeting, so I, I would envision there'll be another invoice or two.
I mean, a motion.
So moved, authorized the chairman?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, yeah, I know. Patrick Moore. We need to appoint him to the two hundred fiftieth committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, Patrick. I'm gonna sign that one just to make it official. And then I have, oh, there we have it. Seven is a donation to the Police Department. It's, uh, Southwick Civic Police Academy for the amount of twenty-five dollars from Louise Alberti. We can approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, number eight is also a donation to the Police Canine Gift Account from the, um, V F W to be used for the, uh, our dog.
So moved.
Program.
Second.
We get some more. Robbie, did we get a few more of those more?
Yeah, they're in the, at the back of the folder.
Back of Joe's action folder?
Okay.
He can pull, he can pull those out as part of this.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a few more.
It should be two.
Not dog related. There's only so much dog stuff we can do in one night.
No, no, no request of dog hearings.
All right, no, it's like that. Next one.
Just for the.
All right. So up next is the, uh, hundred dollar donation from Ellen and John Semcel, Semcel? It looks like he wants his, the Southwick Police, uh, Gift Account, hundred dollar donation.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Another donation for twenty-five dollars from Louise Alberti. Uh, she would like that to go to the Citizens Police Academy.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, for taxes. A lot of people are doing this for taxes.
Yeah.
You want to make sure you accept them.
Yes, no doubt about it. Okay. And then we have the Special Municipal Employee Designation List Update.
Right. That's been pending for a while, so that's gotta be voted on so that the town clerk can file it and if you look at the difference between the one, uh, the previous one and the new one, you'll see the people that come and gone from different boards.
Yes.
And then other people that are on those boards have those designations.
Yep.
Are there any questions on it? I think I made the, the, the notes. You can see who left and who went on and stuff.
Yep.
Pretty well straightforward.
It is. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yep.
Need a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, ten A is basically a, um, the chief is looking to put two people through the Reserve Policing Academy with no intentions of us hiring them or anything of that nature. And it looks like the names this time will be, um, Mr. Sanchez Junior and Matthew J. Olson.
So moved.
Yeah, I, my packet didn't have the Sanchez one either.
It's under Chairman.
It's under Chair Mail. These are gentlemen that we interviewed years ago out of Westfield State. I think you took a course with them, didn't you?
Sort of.
Sort of.
This is just him descending to the.
Right, so simply said under Reserve Academy, no, uh.
There's no action.
No guarantees on anything.
Right, actually, the chief's just notifying you. The board had asked to be notified of sponsorship.
Yes, that was.
The chief has the authority under the law to do.
Right. So that was a courtesy letter. Okay, I'll tell them thank you for that courtesy letter. We appreciate it. And then I have under Chair Mail is Request for Proposal Property.
Yep.
Do you have that right?
The minutes? That's the minutes for my bid opening thing?
Yes. Is that what that is?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Your, there.
Yep, thank you. All right, so what do we have to do with this? Just?
It's just for you to know.
It's an F Y I.
Well, we got, we got one.
Got one, uh, bid in for the old library. Which I was rather disappointed with. I thought, uh, by.
No, we're gonna get three, but it's okay. I mean, it's a good, it's a decent number and it's going to accomplish the purpose so that all of the elements that were supposed to be submitted appear to have been. So as the procurement officer, I'm working with the town attorney, um, to review all of that and then, um, this would be coming back in front of the Select Board. If everything is okay for a vote to award the bid and go to a purchase and sales agreement for the sale of that property as your January agent.
Okay.
As the chairman set to be the schedule for this.
Yes, hopefully that works out for you guys. Eleven A, authorized Chairman and C A O to do a temporary backfill for staff with medical leaves.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Looks like I got through the whole packet.
Yep.
On my end anyways. All right, um.
You got, you wanna knock this out too?
What do you got? What, are they coming in front of us?
Oh, they're coming.
Yeah, so.
Five forty is the, uh.
Okay.
Yeah. No, no, they, they had that, yeah, so.
All right.
Then these guys are after.
Right, the five of them.
All right, Franklin Land Trust. Yeah.
Well, he runs a tight ship.
Come on up, folks. How you doing tonight?
Good.
Haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, it's good to see you guys.
Microbooth in there?
No. I move on to whiskey.
Oh, excellent.
She's a realist.
We vented that phase at this point.
So you're not coming in front of us with the rest of the money and just looking for signatures?
So we wanna, we wanna update you on where we are.
All right.
And, and, um, we're still plugging away at it, but, um, you know, time is getting down. Uh, we have a.
What is the deadline?
Well, it's not until June, but the state has basically said if you guys have got your, have it all pulled together by March, they're gonna make their money.
Some of their monies.
Uh, we're gonna meet with them tomorrow to try to talk through some of that and, um, um, you know, we've, we're still continuing to turn over every rock. We're, we're still fundraising. We had over four hundred thirty residents of Southwick contribute towards this project, which is pretty remarkable. Um, we've, uh, Elaine has a list. Do you have a list of everyone?
We have the list of everyone, not really for sharing.
But in terms of.
That's fine. I don't really wanna hear about it, so.
Every single donor, mostly Southwick residents.
Sure.
Well, all Southwick residents.
That's awesome.
Um, number of foundations, a number of other nonprofits, and other number of private groups. Um, so we continue to plug away. Uh, as you know, we've submitted another application to the C P C.
Yeah, what's up with that?
Well, it's a good question.
Seems to be sitting.
Yeah, we sent, we submitted it in October and, uh, they're supposedly supposed to meet every month and they haven't met since and we're being told that their next meeting won't be till maybe the end of January and that's cutting.
That's ironstanding as January.
That's pretty, cutting it pretty close for us in terms of that March deadline and the, the hope we're.
Is that the last piece that you need though?
Well, it, it, we're trying to pull all the parts together, so we needed to request some more funds. Um, and at the October eleventh meeting, uh, with the C P C, there was quite a great turnout of people really supporting it. Um, which I'm not sure if anyone was there for that, but that was pretty impressive and, you know, I think with the over three hundred or so, um, donors, it's, I think there's town support for this, but if the committees are not gonna be supportive and if they're going to push it down to January and then we're looking, we've already explained that we can't wait till May for town meeting vote because we can't, we can't wait that long to know whether we have the, have the money, have additional funding. We're meeting with the state tomorrow and so we're trying to get all the parties to commit to some more and so far everyone's kicking it down the road. And frankly, we're kind of feeling a little bit concerned and a little bit, you know, we do this constantly. The amount of hours we've put into this project, um, has been pretty amazing and because we feel it's worth it.
This one of your harder ones of getting through apparently.
Well, of course, yeah.
We knew going in it was a lot of money.
Yeah.
But at the same time, the model that was pitched at the time in that first meeting we had to talk about this project when we were invited to come down here, uh, was a model where there was gonna be, you know, a million dollars coming from the private business sector and two million dollars from the town and we were being asked basically to pretty much go out and raise a million dollars and really what turned out to be we were being asked to raise three million dollars and, and so it's, um, you know, it's, it's pretty, it's been quite a lift. Um, one thing we would love to get from you folks tonight, if anything, would just be an additional voice of support for the project and ideally for the C P C application. Um, we're, uh, we're interested in the potential for a special meet, town meeting and to the extent that that might cost the town money to do something like that. We'd like to have a conversation about what that expense would be and whether or not we could pay for that, pay for that out of the project costs. But we really, um, just can't wait till May. Um, and, um, we, we're under risk of losing the state funding, um, if nothing else. And, um, you know, we, we hope that you all support the project.
Well, I think we have, right?
Yeah, we have.
There's a million on the table from us so far.
No question.
No question about it. No question about it. And we, if we didn't have to come back for another fight.
You don't wanna be here, I know that. Absolutely.
Come back for it.
Yeah, understood.
And we're asking the.
Christmas list.
No, you know, we're asking the state to find some other money, you know, in addition to the one point six that they're committing to it.
Right. Now, some of that already gone away because you bought parcels of it?
They bought the, the, the eastern portion for a million because they had to spend their money or lose their money. So that, that is part of the issue of it being more difficult to still raise.
Right.
It's not quite as sexy without that grassland, since that's already been served.
When you say the one six, is that netting out the other month? It was already quiet or, or still in addition to that?
No, no, they, they gave a million in the big, the first round and they have another six hundred sitting.
Sitting.
Plus the town has the four hundred thousand dollar land grants.
Yep, D C S.
So that's the million there, yeah.
So they have another, you know, so they're committing, the state is committing.
The million and then the water number?
The water, forty, right. Twenty-five plus five for a survey. So we're, you know, it's, it's, there's already been a lot, but, um, you know, and we've gone through all these things, why we can't get to.
No, I know. And just that she doesn't wanna budge. I mean, she's locked in on that number.
Yeah, what, what's going on with the, uh, any position with the seller in terms of the.
Right, I mean.
Receptiveness to.
It sounds easy, of course, but it, it doesn't appear to be.
Doing something with the gap on the number?
Well, the, the last, absolute last thing, after we've pushed as hard as we can to figure out if, if we can get as, you know, closer to that five million, uh, it will be to go to her and say, this is it. We've, this, we've raised as much as we possibly can. Uh, and would you agree to us, you know, to take a bargain sale? Uh, because, you know, either that or you take the property, you know, back and you, you have to sell it and, and it would be a lot easier to go to her and have that conversation, having raised four million or four and a half million, than go to her and have that conversation at three and a half million, which, you know, when the P N S was for five. And so, um, I, you know, I, I think, I'd like to think she realized she has a bird in the hand if we go to her with a, you know, a little higher number. But you never know. Who knows?
Yes, so none of those conversations have really happened.
Well, so they happened early on, but she thought she'd already, she thought, she'd been offered ten million at one point, she claims.
Yeah, well.
And but it's probably a pie in the sky.
Tell you a little secret.
Yeah, it was probably a pie in the sky, thinks some developer hoping to hook her.
Yeah.
But she already thinks she's giving us a huge bargain sale. So that's why the conversation's.
No, not of any version, no.
By any end.
No, but she ma, she's made it quite clear along, she's not at all interested in a bargain sale and.
That's fine.
You know, playing hardball or not.
Yeah, and that's.
That's all, it's all.
You know, we're, we're literally going to all the parties. We're coming back to you by way of the C P C. We're going back to the town tomorrow and then we will be going to her.
Right, understood.
And then saying, this is it. But we, you know, this.
You gotta do this, right?
We're kind of at that point where we're done, you know, it's very hard to fundraise for.
Done with the golf, golf terms.
Yeah.
These are great and they raise the money.
Very social, good time, right, yep.
How much did the private fundraising raise? I mean, you had a number of the assumptions.
Right, we've raised over three hundred and twenty thousand, um, from private.
Individual.
People, small businesses, um, small grants.
Foundations.
Small foundations and such, so, um, and, and the number of Southwick residents, I think, is, that have given anything from twenty-five to five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars is significant. So I think in terms of, you know, the residents of Southwick supporting this, there's a lot of support, you know, and whether the very wealthy folks sitting around the lake or whatever are not putting up those, you know, five hundred thousand dollar checks that we need, obviously not, but, but, so, but there's a lot of support of individuals, of, of groups, of, you know, uh, sportsmen's clubs, Westfield Sportsman's Club, the Mass Land Trust, Mass, um, National Sportsman's Land Trust, Savage Arms, all these are, you know, it's, it's quite a variety of, of people supporting it, so, um, it's just a very big ticket and, um, the ability to raise foundation money in such a short period of time is really hard. Those are relationships you build over years and so that portion of what we were trying to do was just, is not coming to fruition for us.
We've gotten some support from that.
Yeah, we have had some.
And then, then maybe one or two other places that we go back to. If we get to the, the point where we have a number where we're basically talking about closing the deal, we need X number of dollars just to close the deal, there's some people who would probably go back to some other, some foundations and say, look, we just need X number of dollars to get this all done, which would consider being the closer for us, you know, but one and a half million is a long ways away from.
Yeah, I mean, if you were in front of me looking for a hundred or two hundred, I mean, I think we would jump through hoops to, to close the deal.
Right, exactly.
But we're not, you know?
I mean, so the other thing is I know when we had talked a while back, you had voiced support of being supportive of another C P A application. I put in for five hundred thousand. Now, that was where I needed to be.
That was a far different number than what you floated with us.
Right, but that's where I needed to be. Like, if I was gonna go back to all the parties and ask them each to chip in a third of what we needed, including us raising, um, you know, if you're, if you're going to say you're not gonna support a half million dollar second application, what are you willing to support? And, and then we see whether that's worth it for us to wait until that period of time to, and have a special town meeting and go through that whole, you know, if you're gonna say, I'm only gonna do another fifty thousand, then, then we won't bother working on this anymore, but if you're.
But we would like, ideally, we could, you know, the press is in the room.
Yeah, they're the only ones in the room.
Ideally, we'd like to be able to challenge, have the town in effect, challenge the state.
Yeah.
You know, and say, state, we'll come up with this if you come up, if you match it, you know, that would be an ideal situation to be in.
Are you gonna meet with the state this week?
We're meeting with folks from Fishing Game and from Executive Office of Environmental Affairs tomorrow, a couple ships down from.
March, I'm sorry, I was interrupting you. When you say March, are we talking about March first or is this on?
Um, no, March first.
March first.
Yeah, Fishing Game has, the way their money comes in, they get allocated, and if they don't spend it, they lose it. It doesn't get to move over. It's just the way they're funding, so they need to.
Does not roll over.
Does not roll over. They literally lose it and then it looks as if like, oh, they didn't need that much, so.
Does that go back to the federal government or does it close up?
No, no, this is state money.
Close up?
But they re, they re-sign it to another.
Right, it'll go to like maybe Department of Ag or D C R. They'll see whoever can use it up before.
Within the secretary.
Yes, I believe so.
It depends on where the money comes from. If it, if, if the secretary signs cap every year, you know, the state agency can't spend a cap, its cap, then it will assign that cap to some other agency that can by the, that can spend it by the end of the fiscal year.
That's right. You used to work for them. You know how it works.
Yeah. Now, if there's specific accounts to the Department of, of Fishing Game.
Right.
They don't lose that money. They just lose the ability to spend some of it because obviously the Mass Department of Air Resources gets to spend its money out of that cap. Um, and so, um, and, you know, maybe March first is a little early to be making those decisions, but.
But they need to find another project to go spend six hundred thousand dollars on.
Right.
So that's what we're talking about, six hundred thousand.
We run into that.
Is what is sitting there, yes.
The transportation people run into that with the J's.
Right.
So the million was spent on the eighty acres?
The million was spent on the eighty-three acres. Fishing Game's committed to this extra six hundred thousand. The land grant is that, is another four hundred, which is also sitting and waiting. D C S land.
That's got an extension through June thirty.
Right, so we're all in line to close this by June, but we essentially need to have it all confirmed that by March first, we know that Southwick is putting in X number of dollars from C P A and then E E A is gonna put X number of dollars and we go back to Denise and go, this is what we have to give you.
Okay, so the, just, just for everybody's clarification, because we have been working on this for a while now.
Yes, we have.
And I remember that original meeting, sitting here.
Yes.
Uh, where we all agreed that this was the number one project and then
Right.
some people seem to lose sight of that and spent money on other projects.
Right.
Dennis recommended the money not go to other things and it still went there.
And we understand, we understand some of the background of all this and we're kind of stuck in the middle.
Okay, so we, we have already, taxpayers have voted one million dollars, right? So we have one million, six hundred thousand that we have available right now, correct?
Um, what do you mean?
Where, which source?
We got the million.
Our million.
No, we have.
You got four hundred thousand from D C S, then you got six hundred, they're saying leftover still.
Yeah.
Right, so there's two million sitting there.
So there's.
It's basically.
Out of the, because the other millions are even bought, so you only need four million you need to raise.
Right, and we raised two and a half already, including what you guys have set aside and the land grant.
So we're really, we're basically one and a half million.
Of the four million ballots.
Right.
Right.
So, okay, so we're.
No, the total. We owe her five. Um, we've raised three and a half. So we're short one and a half.
So we're short. But I thought she already got.
She got her million, so we.
There's three right here. Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we owe her, yeah.
Right, one from C P C, point four from D C S, point six from the state.
Yep.
Still out there. One, there was another million dollar from the state that was already closed.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's two, that's three. From five, you're short two, private money.
So it was three hundred?
Yeah, I mean, we have.
Three hundred, Doug, so there's.
Yeah.
Three hundred onto that.
Right.
Right.
So two million, three hundred thousand?
Yeah, and, and, you know, the reality is too that the five million is, if, if we raise that, would go to her and we've incurred quite a few expenses, uh, on top.
Your own middle, your costs.
Yeah, quite a few.
Your transaction costs.
Oh, man, we, yeah, and so it's really, we're not, really don't need to raise five. We need to raise more than the five or the more than the one and a half that's left to be raised, uh, in order to cover, cover our expenses.
How bad is your expenses? Rough numbers?
Oh, if I had to guess right now, I would guess our, we're probably fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
We've had to give her, for instance, um, every time we've gotten an expen, extension, we've had to give her a sweetener to get her to agree to an extension.
Is that for the taxes?
Yeah, covering her taxes.
Right, your, your extensions.
So you've been paying the taxes?
Yeah.
I was under the impression that someone else was paying them.
No.
That was part of her demand.
Yeah. Which is fair enough.
You know, we feel like this is a worthy.
Parties in town?
I, I, I was told another private party in town was paying this.
No, we're, we've been, we've been paying the taxes.
I mean, she's paid some, I think. It's not like we're just paying them. She's paid.
Well, this time, this last extension, we're basically paying them.
Right.
But, um, which, you know, in fairness to her, she had the P N S and we were supposed to get this done in a certain amount of time and she's, you know.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I, I just.
No, we got it.
I just thought someone else was picking up that tab.
I hear you're right.
You know? And the taxes, I, I assume went down, being a former, so that's why we, we reduced eighty-three acres.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, we are, this is, this is one of the hardest projects we've worked on, but it's also one of the most important, and.
It's gonna be your last big one, your newsletter says you're leaving.
If it doesn't kill me, if, really, but.
He's not even.
One way or the other, no, no, no.
I got my newsletter, and I'm thinking, wow.
Yeah, yeah, by this time next year, hopefully, but, but, but also, it's really, I mean, it's one of the most exciting ones we've ever worked on, quite frankly, as an organization. I mean, it is an amazing resource, and, and we're gonna try to make that argument to the Commonwealth that if we don't conserve what's left of it, it's gonna impact what they've already conserved, what they've already purchased. You know, if you have houses bumping up against their wildlife management area, it's gonna have impacts on their ability to manage that area, so.
So I personally feel a lot more comfortable going to the owner with a bit more money in our pocket to then say, this is truly it, this is what we have. I, I feel like we're, I personally feel like we're a little short. Rich is of the impression that she's not gonna take anything below the total. I just feel like she's gonna like play hardball, grumble, grumble, and then hopefully take it, but I don't feel like we're at that number yet that's gonna make her happy.
I don't think the three and a half is gonna.
Which is why we're coming back to the town and to Fish and Game to get it up a little bit farther, in addition to what we have raised ourselves that's sitting there waiting to be spent.
Yeah.
So, I think we're close.
If, I mean, I wish the CPC had met in November, December.
Well, you have any, we're gonna meet January eighth again, you gonna have an update from them?
Well, I, I'm guessing that we will maybe, well.
That way we could see what that's looking like too, or we may.
We might know by, by then, maybe Fish and Game is gonna, and EEA is gonna look at it a little more closely.
If they say tomorrow, you know, really seriously, forget it, we just can't put anything else in, sorry, then we'll move that tomorrow, probably, but, um.
But I think the CPA, the CPC delay for a, an application that was put in October fourth is a little concerning to me that they're not even gonna vote on it until January thirty-first. So, and for whatever reasons, besides the fact that they had some new people, which I think they could, not a really difficult application, they're waiting till January to vote on it, is a little concerning that it's just gonna be too late to, to deal with, with address, you know, with.
The rest of that process.
Yes.
Right.
You know, so that's our, that's my concern with that, and, and so, that's where that sits.
So there's a magic number out there somewhere you'd like us to say we'd love to endorse?
Well, that, that would be great.
Understanding that if the project doesn't happen, none of this money's gonna get spent, so it's, you know.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So, but, but if we, yeah, if we could go, go before them tomorrow, and I don't wanna put you guys on the spot right here tonight, but, but, um, if we come away tonight with a positive feeling that you guys are, you know, behind the, the application, and hopefully would work with us on trying to figure out how to do a special town meeting, which again, if it's a money issue for you guys, you know, there's a way we can cover that. If, if the special town meeting, if the town meeting was gonna be in March or April, you know, maybe we could convince the state to hold off in pulling the funds, but they're not gonna hold off till May.
Yeah, our annual by, by town buy-in law is in May, so it would have to be a special.
Right, which we understand.
It's only probably a couple grand to hold that.
Yeah.
Right?
You may have to do it, you know, there may be some expenses that the town clerk runs into.
Right.
That weren't anticipated in the budget structure, she's already short on, because of the elections that were just held, so she's already gonna need a transfer on that, but.
Right.
If we, if we could help with that, another two thousand bucks.
Well, yeah.
When you're talking five million.
But I also heard him say the backside of this is you're short anyway, so just, just keep adding it on, yeah.
Add it to the shortage, right?
We'd like to succeed.
Yeah, understood.
You know, we, we, we hold nothing when this is all done. We walk away, the town owns it, Fish and Game helps to manage it.
Even though they can set a date, something has to come from the committee under the law.
Right, that's the problem.
That's the way it works, so it's gotta, it's gotta come from the committee.
Right, that's my understanding.
And again, we question why there's been such a delay, but, you know, one could surmise why there was, but.
But it's there now.
But it's there now.
Welcome to a small town.
Yeah.
So that's our pitch.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Well, you're gonna let us know how tomorrow's meeting goes.
Yes, we will.
With your permission, we'll say we had a positive meeting with the selectmen, they're still very supportive of the project.
Well, I think so, and if you came in front of me today and said, Joe, I need two hundred thousand, and we're signing tomorrow, I, I'd probably beat their heads together until they said yes, but. That ain't the number you wanna hear. I don't know if I could say across the table, I can give you five hundred tomorrow. That's not in me personally, too?
Yeah, I mean, I. And, and as Carl said, unless that committee votes to move it forward.
Depending on what they do, right, and I don't know how does that work, is that set number the set number?
Well, I, you know, I.
They can do whatever they want.
I think they can come back and, and say.
Here's our fire sale you want or don't want.
They have to.
Can you give us, we'd be happy to give you three hundred.
Okay, understood.
The CPC has to balance it, right, against other applications or foreseen applications as a committee, right, that's their charter. Right, so they could say, yeah, we're already in for this for a million, we don't think that one and a half is the right approach. But like you said, two hundred to make this whole thing on a five million dollar project go around, okay.
Yeah, and that's what I said, yeah, no.
We see it, and we'll go there, right.
And if you said to me, two fifty, and the state's gonna jump in two fifty tomorrow, and we go tell them, the boys said maybe two fifty.
And we said that got you another number that you could put on the table to the owner, then that's, they're walking away from a number that was closer.
Yep. Yes, a significant number.
And that's my opinion, of course.
That's what we're looking to do.
It would be gone by now, that probably would've been gone.
And it would prove to her that we really did turn every rock over. We even went back for a second time.
But it's, and it, to me, it's also a little bit of the, the townspeople, the town, and the market telling you, right? By the, the piece that sold for a million was the really nice, you know, was a very nice piece.
Well, it did have all the frontage, right, of the value.
I get it, but it's still, it has a value, and that million went to that, and so you're, you're at where you are, you know, give or take a couple hundred thousand dollars, and say, this is what the market is telling us.
Yeah.
That the town's willing, and the townspeople are willing to go in for.
And I wouldn't, but I don't wanna cut you off, and how many acres is that, sixty, sixty-three?
Sixty-two, sixty-three.
Sixty-three is the balance.
That's left.
What's left, yes.
There's no developer out there that's gonna give her that kind of money for that, there's none.
Cause they'll, they'll, they will, that will be their Waterloo to try to get that through all the various committees, to, to try to get that to upstage where it's developable. And, and that's not just because of where it is, I mean, I've talked to developers, lands that are at all close to a wetland is just gotten almost insurmountable.
To do.
To do. The, the site work and the site preparation work for paperwork is, just makes them almost undevelopable now.
But being pond front, which you, you, you can't buy it anymore.
No, I get it.
You could have, maybe it's not twenty-five house lots, but it's some big, you know, big mansion type homes that will shut the rest of that pond down to public access completely forever. No one will ever be able to fish off that shore again, or swim off that shore again, and that's probably what the reality would be for her.
Sure, well, and then, and.
A big box potentially for each of those house lots.
But, and that discussions come up and come up again, and maybe it, you know, I don't know if it's completely off the table, it's been off the table before, but maybe that is something that needs to be discussed, that.
You mean with her?
Yeah, that maybe there is two or three lots left that could be carved out of this piece to make the whole project go around. I know, I'm, I'm putting it out there again, because.
It's not to do with the landowner, it's the, the state money would go away if he did that.
Yeah, the whole project would.
Okay.
Elaine went back to DCS and asked them about the frontage lots that were brought up in earlier meetings.
We tried to do like the limited development, they, they lose, then we lose the million dollars.
Well, then that, then that, that is what it is, but it was worth mentioning once more, just for, you know, you're meeting with the state again tomorrow with, you know, up against it. Maybe it's worth an asterisk at the end, just because, you know, that was floated around a few times, and I know they've said no before, but.
No, we want their solution to be, they give us more money, you give us a little more money, and Denise agrees to a bargain sale.
And everyone hopefully is happy.
So, but it is that, that is where it's sitting.
And we'll continue to fundraise in that period of time too, so, I mean, if, if at the end, if, when everything's all said and done, if, you know, if we, if we've raised the additional money that doesn't require some of these additional contributions, that's great, you know, who knows?
Well, we all sat here, what, two years ago, three years ago, I, I'm losing.
It feels like ten years ago.
We all sat here and said this was the number one thing, we all agreed to that, you know, and we started the process with Fish and Game. And, and they put in their million, and, and they got the land that they want, we put in our million, and then.
Right, you know, right.
Oh, yeah. I would hope that when you.
Well, if this fell apart, I would take that million, that, all if I do that.
No, what I'm saying, yeah, but that's. Their support here.
We are going to, you know, from, from their perspective, it's an ecological perspective, and, and we, and a investment perspective, and so, believe me, we try to, we're, we're looking at, you know, from.
It's also EPR when you think about, it's another form of saving money.
Oh, of course, right, well, we're looking at, you know, we're look, you know, from the perspective of the town, this is an amazing resource to save forever for people to, you know, for your water resources. From the state perspective, it's habitat and, and buffer and wa, and resources.
And connect it into the water.
So it's a win-win for everyone, we're just not at the point where it's gonna function, you know, it's gonna happen yet, and it, I, I would be, I'm just heartbroken that we can't get to that place.
It's the laser between the water and the grass.
Yes.
And, and, you know, we're, we're also struggling right now with, there's an environmental bond bill that's on the shelf, we're staring down the barrel of, of a million dollars to treat those lakes, to keep them usable and open, right, so we have to be cognizant of that.
Yeah.
You know, as we allocate resources, cause if, if something happens on the lake, well, y, y, your project.
Goes away.
You know, be, be, that.
What do you, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what you mean.
If, if, you know, we're looking at treating, to stop these algae blooms, and, and then we're looking at a, a larger dredging project and a bunch of other things to help in, keep and improve those lakes.
But that water starts in North Pond and flows south.
I get it, I get it, but if, if we have where, you know.
But CPA money doesn't get used for those projects.
It can, it absolutely can, the dredging and some of the permitting, we've had discussions with that, yes. So, and not that we're taking from one to the other, but we're looking at other expenses on those lakes that.
And the development of that.
Sort of relate to the water.
The de, development of, of the sixty-two acres would only increase the issues that you have on the lake already.
Potentially, yes, you're right.
I mean, the, the perfect fertilizer going down, the paved driveways going down, the phosphates.
Nutrient loading.
You know, the, right, let alone the erosion, the septics, even though it'll be, is it septic or sewer?
Septic.
It is septic, right, so that's.
Well, that area I think is still be septic, yeah.
You know, this is the only picture we keep in this room.
I know.
We'll get you a new one.
It's just there.
We're gonna get you a new one, but it's all covered.
It's there all the time.
Yeah.
In our informal discussions, again, over a long period of time, I think at one time we said something about going back to the state and giving them some water access.
I think we did those grants.
We had looked at, at carving differently to give them.
To give them a motivator to.
Give them the, the wetland section.
Where the vernal pools are, yeah.
Right, right, the vernal pools and stuff.
Right, they had wanted this, they would've wanted this area, cause right here is a vernal pool that's been circled by, so that was back when we were, you can see all these strange lines. That was back when we were sitting here saying, the town maybe only wants a little bit to own, and Fish and Game will take more.
Would that be something that would motivate them in your conversations with them tomorrow?
It might, the only question I have in my mind, and Elaine probably could figure this out better than me at this point, but that, in terms of appraisals and, and all the process stuff, what would need to be done in order to change the lines now, but.
What are you talking about, Russ, you're talking about maybe lowering the sixty-three acres down to another number under maybe a smaller DCS application, but that's more than made up by another state agency getting a different benefit with more.
Or enticing them really.
Enticing them really to connect to what we have, or what they already have, protecting the vernal pool.
Yeah.
Protecting some more possibly endangered species, providing access to the water.
We'll talk about all options tomorrow.
I think that's a, I think we need to bring that up again.
You know, because, all right, that way, okay, they got a little more skin in the game.
Yeah, we'll take a little less, yeah, of course.
This is still.
But we're still achieving the goal that we're trying to achieve.
Yes, this is the clay cut, this is the, these ones have been clay cut already.
Yes. Well, this, yes, yeah, this wildlife management is about up to here.
It's been moved off the line, right, since I took.
Boy, did the phone ring when that happened?
I know.
I was like, guys, they're putting condos in, what do you think was gonna happen?
It's a different kind of habitat.
Oh, it's gonna be amazing.
Be sure to say, yeah, that's right, if I get your checkbooks out, you could still start it.
Yeah, you can stop that chainsaw today for a hundred bucks.
Yeah, no, the map, the, the parcel could definitely be reshaped, the logistics of what it looks like to entice Fish and Game with more fee. Part of the reason we made the shape the way it is now is because the town had wanted to actually own more of it.
More of the frontage of the.
Well, 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 we, discussions, we realized that we're limiting our resources, so if there was less for us to take care of.
Yes.
It'd be easier on the taxpayers a lot more, but then we found out, I think afterwards, about the vernal pool in this area that you really don't want a lot of activity in anyways.
So, th, this is, this is the area, this is the line right now as it exists, this was just my mock-up of what it would look like if you put big fancy homes on there with docks. That's the vernal pool.
Oh, those are all the lots?
Yeah.
Yep, those are, that is a, a very estimated, but according to the zoning.
Right, right, the one that Levec based on his plans of the test on how he's used.
Very generally, very generally, yeah, but just more of a visual thing to say, you know, somebody would drive in and.
Road comes in off the road, main road, and then those are all driveways down to the water.
Yeah, this was, and this was purely my kind of general, you know, illustration to, to make a point, but yes, we can certainly, we will talk to Fish and Game more and see if there's any interest in maybe making, you know, it a little bit different. It, it won't look any different when you really go out there.
Oh, no, we're good.
If it reduced our acreage and our grant proportionally, and they picked up more and got a different agency within them got more of what they wanted.
Well.
Or Fish and Game, which is.
Like, we, we're not thinking then you're gonna decrease the million dollar CPA.
Oh, we're talking about.
No, 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 no.
With the DCS part.
Just trying to help you.
We're trying to entice them to say, yeah, we are gonna pick in more money.
So, so we can, we will definitely, I already planned on having that conversation with them tomorrow, what would make them feel like they could put more money in. It's, it is, you know, the details of which I know you guys have other things on the agenda, but.
The other thing that went away too was the well site, and we were never able to get the town enticed into having the well site.
No, the water, yeah, I mean, the water commissioners looked at it.
But it's still watershed protection, which is very big, and it's still the water line.
I know, you went to their meeting, right? You went to a water commission meeting.
I did go to a water commission meeting a while, like a while ago, and they voted to support this in, in, in a, you know, a generous amount, so.
Cause they'll get their, still get their easement.
Right, they'll get the, they'll still do, will still do the water line easement in there, cause that was an agreed upon, you know, that was something that the town needed.
Yeah, they have.
Right.
Waterline extensions, pump stations, they got all this other big infrastructure.
So, yes, we will definitely bring on to see whether, could Fish and Game be more willing to put some more money in, and maybe the town can still be, you know.
At least there's a few feet of water, we're easy.
Yeah, so.
Cause it, we still achieved the goal.
It, it, the goal is conservation and it's public access.
It doesn't look the same.
And that's an area that you don't want a lot of people trumping around in.
No, no.
Right, you, you wanna kind of restrict that area.
If I was the town, I would feel relieved if, if the town, if, if they, you know, the state owned it, or, you know, I think, it's all a win-win personally from my perspective. So anyway, that's where we're sitting.
So we'll report back to you, I'll let you know how the meeting goes tomorrow. I'm not sure we'll come away with any definitive answers from anybody, cause we're not, we're not meeting with the secretary, we're meeting with people that work under him, but, but, but we'll let you know how it goes.
The new gentleman that was out for a little ceremony for the, uh, the whip.
Who came, Joe Rogers, the new district manager come?
Big tall guy.
I haven't met him yet, but he's the new district manager for Connecticut River Valley.
He gave the donuts.
What was that?
He gave the donuts.
We, we always give people that give us money, we give them donuts, Murphy's don't.
The secretary didn't make it up.
Works for the governor.
No, but.
Right, that's why you, he wasn't major.
But anyways, we did talk about the importance of the lakes, and we might have an ally there.
Yeah, so I don't know if that was Joe or not, but we're meeting him tomorrow, so if he's tall, I'll know.
He did the newspaper story, he can find out his name from the book, thanks, Greg.
Get us the names, and then we'll forward it to you. Because he talked about the importance of keeping the lakes clean in that area and.
Oh, yeah, he was a, that's, he was raining out, what did he wanna do, leave the dry auditorium and get down to the water?
So, I, I think we have an ally.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
And just out of curiosity, your fundraising letter that just came out last month, good response?
Yeah, we got, oh, almost ten thousand dollars and another, another forty donation, forty new people donated. Not, not that big, but for a percentage, if you know anything about mailings, if you're lucky, if you get like one percent back from anything you do, maybe five percent. So, yeah, so that was good, new people, in some additional.
People have been great, I mean, whether this happens or not, and I still, you know, always never say die until the end, but, uh, the people in Southlake have been great. They've really stepped up, not only at the town meeting to support the million dollars, but, you know, again, having that many donors, single donors to a project is pretty, it's pretty significant.
It is, actually, it's quite significant.
Grassroots.
Yep, grassroots.
Yeah, it just takes a while to build it, so, anyway.
All right, folks.
Thank you, folks, good luck, you very much.
Let us know how it goes.
We will.
As soon as possible.
Thank you.
Chief?
Doctor, doctor.
Hey, everybody looks different.
Yeah.
Without ugly sweats, it's sweater time. Especially Steve. They look even better with the.
No, I'm glad he didn't wear that again. I, I hardly, I could hardly sleep last night, cause I could not get that out of my eyes, that was bad.
Joe, you missed a good dinner, I know you were working, but you would've loved being there.
I'm sure I would've.
I'm sure there's a picture that they can send you of Steve that will give you a nightmare.
I'm good, I'm good. All right. So this is in regards to the lieutenant's openings. All right. Dear board, I am putting together two names for consideration to fill two open fire lieutenant positions. Last year I posted to fill these positions, but felt more time was needed to evaluate candidates and postpone these appointments. During the last year, we allowed members to fill the two acting night officer positions on a voluntary basis. Two members showed interest, Stephen Panett, I did something right, and Dave Smith. Both candidates have done extreme, exemplary job in these acting positions. In addition, they have attended advanced training and taken an active role to understand these positions. I am asking for you to consider David Smith and Stephen Panett to permanently fulfill those roles as fire lieutenant on the on-call force. What do you got to say to yourself, to yourselves? Why you?
What's that?
Why you?
Why me?
Other than you're the only one that is here. Although you're the only one that has zero, but, yeah.
No, I mean, not particularly me, I just, I showed interest into it, and I wanted to look forward to advancing, not just myself, but putting more out and helping out the department as well. And I enjoyed doing a lot of the stuff that we do, but also giving a lot, what I've learned from my role models and doing what, you know.
Make me nervous when you say you have role models, and hopefully not sitting around you, but anyways, continue.
But, yeah, it's just one of those, one of those things I, I look forward to as, as I started, you know, proceeding in the years and getting on the department, helping out whenever I can.
Understood. Mr. Smith?
Sir, I've been doing it for over twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Uh, I've been doing it strong, uh, showed interest in the last year or so. Kids have gotten bigger, uh, had more time to take on more roles, uh, more of a management role, uh, to lead the younger guys, to show strength within the department, to be able to act upon the duties that lie before me. That, uh, uh, just to show an interest, uh, now that things are settled, all my kids being older, I've got a, I'm taking more of an active role, cause I either gotta be involved or not involved.
Right.
So I thought that, uh, being more involved will give me more, in fact, right, to be at a more of a supervisor level is to be more active in the fire department, cause if you don't be active, you kind of get that feeling of, well, what am I doing here? So, it kind of gives me a second wind, given my age, um, to, uh.
Small breath, but, yeah.
Uh, to be more active, to maybe pass on the legacy for the newer guys coming up, to show, um, more of a role model.
Most of the department has changed in the last few years, too.
Been on for twenty-two years, so.
Yeah, you've seen a lot.
Last night was a high tater. I sat at the old guy's table. I sat at the old guy's table, and a lot of guys I ran with, so.
Yeah.
They showed a lot of support.
You were the only active duty person at that table, thinking, why is he over there at that table?
Who I ran with for twenty years, so.
Yeah.
It is what it is, nothing against nobody.
Right, here we are.
It's home.
Sir?
Yeah, I think the chief has made two good recommendations, and I'm very comfortable with the, the candidates.
Wonderful. Clerk, anything?
I'm just the clerk.
I still have to ask you.
I am just the clerk.
Well, I.
The decision isn't reflected on my appearance last night.
We're not holding that against the chief.
I haven't seen it, I have not seen the tapes yet, but, uh.
You are lucky.
I'm in benefit right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can get more out of people after the fact than I can before.
Oh, man, so, no, I, I mean, it, it, these are two strong candidates, and it speaks to what, uh, the chief and the deputy chief are doing over there. We have a great department over there, and it's just getting better.
All right, I need a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Followed in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard again. Enjoy the ride.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Did they get a different color hat or something now, or?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir? Burn that shirt, will you? Burn that thing.
I was just letting the chief know the other conversions from EMT to EMT five five, those are all done.
Those are done, we did those earlier.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Gentlemen.
Thank you for waiting.
Stay warm.
Happy holidays.
Good night. Good night, thank you.
All right. So, uh, any old business, we did, uh, any updates from the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary meeting?
Uh, everything.
Till next week.
According to newspaper, everything's going great.
Wonderful.
I don't believe anything is great.
Uh, anything else for old business you guys have?
I think, uh.
Well, we could go for a while, but the Massey Yachts Grant, you wanna cover that one, Doug?
Well, we had some further discussions with the police chief.
Implementing.
Yeah, implementation around the grant and reconciling it with the money, so that was part of the fiscal year twenty budget. What's not in the grant and existing budgeted monies, Laurel will be able to put something together for that.
Okay.
Budget process.
All right.
And also reconciling that project with two other projects that were also going through the budgeted process or already budgeted, to make sure that there's no overlap, that there weren't redundant equipment or redundant costs, so.
That conversation was happening three o'clock this afternoon.
Yes.
With our state-approved vendor.
Yeah.
For, uh, computers and our department heads were in a conference today at three o'clock, going over just those things.
Correct.
All righty.
Um, and also old business, the, uh, fire pumper truck has, uh, was released for bid. Robin and I had advertised it, and, uh, it's being, you know, the specs are being released, and it's, that's the other off.
All the new, the other truck, yes, yes, yes.
Remember, the other one was, the ladder truck came through a bid cooperative.
Right.
The fire, uh, committee, command staff handling the truck wanted to do this one competitively.
Right.
So there was a, um, a, a document structured through that, that committee, the chief and town council, and, uh, that was finished, and that is now being passed.
Okay.
So we'll have the answers on that by sometime in, um, uh, late January, uh, with a bid opening there. So another thing you guys will be looking at doing.
Right.
As well as the library analysis.
Yeah.
At your next meeting on the eighth.
Okay.
So that's under the old business.
Cause that's funded, right?
Yes, yes.
Uh, that is, it is authorized as a debt service.
Correct, but it's, it is in the budget already.
It is in the budget, yeah.
So we have, we have money for, for short-term borrowing payments.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
As our next two years of step-off debt happens, we need to make sure that will reflect the amortization schedules for both pieces of equipment, along with the other policy decisions you're going to make on other items that will also take that debt up. And along with that, yesterday commenced the tie-in bond study of the buildings.
Right.
So they came and looked at police, fire, library yesterday, interiors, I'm told they're gonna be doing exterior reviews of them. And then after the holidays, they'll be coming and doing the, um, town hall in the DPW facility, so that's, so that's underway.
Okay.
So all of the things that are on your goals and objectives lists are being chipped away.
Wonderful, we appreciate that. All right, new business, I have FY twenty budget meeting schedule.
I have talked with the chairman of the finance committee, and we have tentatively set, uh, Saturdays in March.
Sounds good. How's March looking for you?
Not so much, very good, but I'll figure it out.
Okay.
I have a scheduled trip coming up in March sometime, but I'll work around.